We all have different... I...I've got some work with my father for that. And she calls, she's in the office. They're sending him to help services. The father. We have a son, she's in school.
Don't see any of the ordained in the audience, so...oh, Dennis, would you like to lead us in prayer? No one should feel like they have to join us if they don't want to. This is not required.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this night and for all those that are here in attendance. Lord, we ask you, Lord, for your blessings and your understanding upon each and every issue that's up here, Lord. And, Lord, we ask you, Lord, to strengthen and help the body here and help each and every one here to have an understanding of what's going on, Lord. Father, we give you the praise, the glory, the honor in all things in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Calls Peter Dorder. Those in attendance, please rise and join us for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled February 21st, 2022 city council meeting. As you come in tonight, to my right, which can be to your left, there's a sign-in sheet on the desk out there. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Soha.
Present.
Reiner.
Here.
Beer.
Here.
Morsey.
Here.
Sherb. Stuccio.
Here.
Pratt.
Here.
Sizer.
Here.
Mayor Stockard.
Present.
Happy present, Mayor.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move into approval agenda. Does the city manager or any members of council have any changes they'd like to see made to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion number four from Councilman Morsey, seconded by Councilman Soha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we have an agenda. We'll move into public comment and agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Please make sure if you're commenting on anything that it has a direct tie to something that's present on the agenda tonight. Also, if you're here on the special assessment districts, please wait until the public comment section of the public hearing. You will have another opportunity to speak. So podium is now open.
Jack McLean, I actually live in Hillsdale Township, but...and we donate like $8,000 a year to the Hillsdale Library. What I wanted to speak about is, and it was in your last council meeting, so somebody should have spoke on this. At the December library meeting, this is what was said. It was reported that there was $1,480 remaining from the children's library grant. This money could potentially be used for holiday bonuses for employees, which I would think is like taking food on Babe's Mouse. Their view of employees' hours and productivity was considered with the intent of deciding bonus amounts. Crest made a motion that the board petition the city to allocate $1,500 for employees' bonuses to distribute it according to the board's discretion. Allen seconded, unanimous, and this lay approved. How can people take grant money from a child's book form and spend it for bonuses? That...that's strictly outrageous that the library board would even do that and then to put it in print. That's worse yet. I mean, I can understand them saying it in their own meeting, but what really surprised me was no one in this council at their last meeting even spoke on that. Or if you did, it didn't get put in the minutes. I cannot believe either you guys don't read these minutes from the other boards or whatever, but that is outrageous to take grant money for children and spend it on people's bonuses. And I hope all the taxpayers of Hillsdale realize that too. That is ridiculous.
Thank you, Jack. I think we'll have an opportunity to talk about that later. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll close podium and move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and BPU claims of January 20th and February 3rd. Payroll of January 20th and February 3rd. City council minutes of February 7th. Library minutes of January 13th. ONG committee minutes of January 26th. EDC minutes of December 21st. EDC special meeting minutes of January 28th. Shade Tree Commission minutes of February 9th. BPU backwash piping replacement. The 2022 border review schedule. And Hillsdale College right-of-way use in noise variance for the Taste of Manning, which is a kind of a block party that they put on Manning Street where they open up the houses and everybody walks from house to house. I don't think you have to live on Manning Street to go to it, so if you're ever born when that's happening, I'd suggest you go down there and let the college kids feed you guys for once. So any discussion on any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion number four from Councilman Morsey, seconded by Councilman Soha. May please have a roll call vote, city clerk.
Councilmember Reiner.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Morsey.
Yes.
Stuccio.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Sizer.
Yes.
Mayor Stockard.
Yes.
Councilperson Soha.
Yes.
All of her.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move into communications petitions. Item A, county commissioner update from Commissioner Ingalls. Doug.
Thank you. Doug Ingalls, Hillsdale County Commissioner, representing Hillsdale Township and the city of Hillsdale. At the last meeting, there was a comment made regarding Hillsdale County Road Commission raising their snow blade when trucks entered the city of Hillsdale. Local units of government have boundaries. Your Public Services Department can provide technical details in how funding works. I did speak with John Sanders, road manager at Hillsdale County Road Commission. In Michigan, the county road commission is in charge of all public streets and roads in the county that are not in the city or a village. Hillsdale County has 608 miles of primary roads and 600 miles of local roads for a combined total of 12,800 certified county roads. 616 miles are paved, 591 are gravel or dirt. Hillsdale County Road Commission also maintains 93 miles of state highways under contract with MDOT. And the city is responsible for maintaining streets inside the city limits. So I wanted to address that and answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingalls. Any questions for Doug?
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilman Soha.
Is there any...and I don't know, I haven't been there, but is there any way to do a city-county partnership? I mean, if they're spinning the diesel to drive through the city and they're on the state highway, I can see why people would be upset while their blades aren't still on the ground.
Right. So what I would suggest is speak with Public Services. They have several projects between the city and the county that they do work together. And I'm...in speaking with John Sanders, I asked that question, and he would be open to discussion regarding contracts. Currently, the city does combine an order of snow blades with the county, provides savings. Can't remember what else to say.
That'd be the big one, but it's all about Act 51.
Oh, yeah.
Exact...exact 51, it has to do with the allocation of funds.
Right.
To maintain those. So the city gets the money to maintain the roads within the city. The county gets the money to maintain their roads, and you start running into issues if you're gonna have the county plowing the roads in the city. Well, then the city's getting the money from the state for that. How are you gonna account with the county for that? So it becomes kind of a bit of a fight on ours to start getting into that.
The other item is that the city does purchase salt as well from the county. So there are certain things that do happen, you know, that can be cooperative and combined. But as county commissioner, my hope is to work with Hillsdale City Council and find new ways to move forward. And that's my goal. Dave and I have talked about it as time has gone on. You know, historically, you know, it seems like there's been, I don't know whether it's territorial or what, but there's always been a conflict as time has gone with county and city. And I'm trying to overcome that the best I possibly can. And it requires my interest and help as well as yours. So that's what my goal is too. But I did want to answer and address that issue. Okay?
Commissioner Ingalls, and I would agree with you about the kind of adversarial relationship that there is between city and county. And it's really a big goal line that we can find ways to overcome that together, moving forward.
It would be to both benefit.
It would be to everyone's benefit. I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you, Doug. Any more discussion on that item? Okay.
Mayor, may I speak for just one?
Sure, thank you.
I have an excellent relationship with John Sanders. We team up on a lot of things. He's helped us with covert replacements. We help...we've helped with some, you know, various traffic control things. We have an excellent relationship from department...department head to department head. We've looked out for each other. We don't buy salt from them, we actually buy it on a state contract. So we don't do any...we don't do any salt purchasing, but we do combine forces because they buy so many more cutting edges than we do for our plow trucks, so it saves us a bunch of money. There's certain areas where we have some overlap, where the county-city border runs right down the middle of the street. Well, we've kind of traded those back and forth, so they might do both sides of a city street, and then we'll do both sides, well, their side and ours, and they'll do...they'll do both sides of another. So there is a map that reflects that. And it has to do with just efficiency because of where we're running our trucks and how we're running them. So, yeah, we have an excellent relationship, department head to department head, certainly.
That's great to hear, Jason. Am I correct in remembering right that when we did chip seal, that we worked in conjunction with the county?
Absolutely, we paid them. Yep, we paid them to chip seal for us one year, went really well. That's West Street, some of the best...the best holding up really well. They also helped us with the covert that was out on Steenberg near St. Anthony Cemetery. That's a section that city maintained from Griswold back up to M-99. So that would have been solely on us to deal with that one. They actually have equipment big enough, they came in and helped us, they brought it all in. And we did some trucking and it worked out very, very well and saved the city a ton of money. So everything has been good, department head to department head, and between John and I, and I just wanted to get that out there. There's no adversary between our departments.
No, it's great that you guys are on par.
Yeah.
We're working well together. Did you have something to add?
I just want to add, we also...our phone system is a joint county-city phone system that we put in a few years back, so we can dial directly and that should be the savings to both the city and the county. So we have had some joint, additional joint projects on the administrative side as well. And I know that the police department and the...
And we borrow signs, things, if we run out. If we were short material, we could borrow back and forth a little bit from...John's excellent to work with from my standpoint, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, Jack. Yep. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on in the agenda to communications petitions. Item B, another letter from Comcast. They're adding some channels, they're dropping some channels, they're being Comcast, so... And item C in communications petitions, assessing code enforcement questions. These were submitted by Councilman Soha. Did you want to run down real quick on it, Councilman Soha?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of constituents that have reached out to me over the past weeks, and one of them, his property was assessed for taxes, and he was very curious on how the city determines not-for-profit status and wanted to hear it on public record and understand the codes and laws that the city submits to. And I would like to hear that as well, and I appreciate the assessor's responses here. I guess maybe I can just read these off, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Kim is here. The city assessor is here, she's prepared to speak.
Well, since Kim stayed late tonight, we'll let her.
Okay, I did prepare some answers to Mr. Soha's questions. So he asked for an explanation of how property taxes are assessed and how not-for-profit status is determined. So property tax assessment is...the administration is done according to the Michigan General Property Tax Act. This was an act that was adopted in 1893. So this is nothing new, but it is constantly being changed by the state legislature, just like every other Michigan act. Real property tax exemptions are contained in Michigan compiled laws, sections 211.7 through 211.7XX. And personal property tax exemptions are in 211.9 through 211.90. That's...these are the real exemptions. These are the personal property tax exemptions. There's no specific exemption for not-for-profit entities. There are various exemptions that, in order to qualify for the exemption, the first step is it has to be a not-for-profit. But just because you're a not-for-profit does not mean you qualify for property tax exemption. That not-for-profit status is determined by the IRS for income taxes. So we have...we have to follow guidance from the State Tax Commission. They conduct audits of every local unit to make sure that we're all following the same assessing requirements. They have a bulletin that they put out in 2017, it's bulletin number 26, that specifically talks about charitable exemptions under 211.70, which is what most not-for-profits would be considered. And they have a three-part test that they refer to that was actually established by the courts, based on case law, that is what we look at to determine whether or not they qualify for property tax exemption. Like I said, the first issue is they have to be a non-for-profit. They have to be a charitable institution. So just because you're a not-for-profit doesn't mean you're charitable. And you have to be using the buildings and land that the property contains solely for the purpose for which you...the exemption... the not-for-profit entity was created. So we have to look at their articles of incorporation, see why they were created in the first place, make sure the use of that property is in line with that exemption. And then, as far as the city goes, we have an application that we have created. There's not a state form for requesting this exemption. Some of the exemptions do have specific state forms under the statutes. This one does not. We created one that asks for those, like I said, the articles of incorporation, their bylaws, a specific explanation of how they use the property in support of that not-for-profit mission. And then that can be filed either directly with the assessor before the first Monday in March every year for the current year. If the assessor denies it or the taxpayer misses that deadline and they receive an assessment notice, they can come to the March Board of Review and file the request with them. If the Board of Review denies them, then they can appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. That appeal has to be filed within a statutory deadline. It's May 31st if it's commercial or industrial property, which is what most not-for-profit buildings would be considered. So if they miss that May 31st deadline, there really isn't anything that we can do to grant the exemption once the Board of Review has denied it for that year. If it has not been to the Board of Review yet, they can come to the assessor for the current year and one year prior and file the documents that we've requested and request exemption. If the assessor affirms that it should have been exempt, but they've missed the filing deadlines, we can take it to the Board of Review at their July or December meetings. Again, the July and December Board of Review, they don't have to grant it just because the assessor says, "Yeah, I think it qualifies." They can look at it and come up with a different decision. That decision, again, can be appealed to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, but it has to be done within 35 days of the decision. And then we have a policy that we've adopted for...or a procedure, rather, for auditing exemptions. Because in the city of Hillsdale, I just wanted to throw out why this is so important for us. Out of approximately 2,600 properties, 393 of them are completely exempt from taxes. It's over 15% of our parcel count that's exempt because we are the county seat, because we are a college, home to a college. And those properties, the county properties, the state properties, the city properties, the college properties, all qualify for exemption. Just make sure I hit all my points.
Is the hospital included in the exemption as well?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Is the hospital included?
The hospital also qualifies for exemption. Yep.
What is it? Five top employers?
Our five top employers. If we look at the value of the property, by far, our top property values are all exempt. So I think that answers the questions that you had on the assessing side. And then for the code enforcement side.
May I enter?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to close that out, so the city follows these procedures to the letter every year. And the property owner's responsible for following the procedures to fill out the forms or the...to go to the tax... the Board of Review or the Tax Tribunal within a certain timeframe. And if those timeframes aren't met.
The city has no authority to change the rule. As we have...you have to also remember, we're not only collecting city taxes, we're collecting county and school taxes as well. We can throw off budgets, we can...there's all sorts of issues that can come up if we were able to make changes in the middle of the year without there being a appeal process.
That's for that year.
Yes.
They could come back the next year. They just wouldn't be able to get the exemption that year if they missed the deadline. So they could come back the next year and try that.
Right, they can file any...in any year.
I understand. Thank you.
Kim, how far can they go back?
So the most we can go back is the current year and one year prior.
So if they've exceeded two years, then that third year back is...
Yeah, we have no authority, and the tribunal has determined that they also have no authority to go back to that third year.
And that's Michigan statutory law. Thank you.
Any questions for Kim, since we've got the podium? Councilman Morsey, roll call vote.
What is the single biggest tax...property taxpayer in the city?
I don't have those numbers in front of me right at the moment.
I believe it's Hillsdale College.
It's...it goes back and forth between Hillsdale College, there's a couple of the properties in the industrial park that are pretty high. Hillsdale's always...the college is always in the top 10.
Okay, so that means that they do pay property taxes.
On some of their properties, on the properties that they purchased for investment purposes or for future development as something other than educational.
Thank you. I guess I would say it's important to note that they go through the same process that Kim spoke about on all their properties. So if they have something they're using that's not part of their mission, then that would be taxed. So they go through the same process as any other nonprofit.
Right, and you may recall we had a few appeals a few years ago because they had a number of properties that they had never filed for. And then when one that they weren't expecting to be taxed was taxed, they started reviewing all of the ones that were on the roll. And they had some others that they just slipped through the cracks.
Are you gonna tackle number two as well?
I will, yep. So...
Okay. No, it's fine, but is Allen here?
He is not.
Kim is in the office.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify something. Everyone refers to the code enforcement department. The city does not actually have a code enforcement department. The property maintenance code falls under the assessor. So does the zoning and planning for the city. And that's strictly...it's mainly a budgeting issue, just so you have one department head preparing the budget because it's such a small part of our staff that it doesn't make sense to have separate departments for them. As you know, Alan does most of our code enforcement for the property maintenance code and for the zoning code. The other codes fall under either police or if, like, BPU has codes that they enforce, DPS has codes that they enforce or will refer to us for assistance with enforcement. But we do not solely have a code enforcement department. And all of our codes that we follow is based on what's in this book, which is the code ordinances that were adopted by the city over the years.
And that's available online, right?
This is available online.
And murecode.com, anybody that wants to look at that.
Or if...there's a link on the city's...the city of Hillsdale page too. Actually, there's multiple links to that same document. Most tickets are issued as municipal civil infractions, so those would fall under Chapter 20, Article 2 of the code. All city employees take an oath to act within the laws of the United States, the state of Michigan, and the city of Hillsdale. So if any employee sees a violation of a city code, they can either take enforcement action themselves if they are authorized to do so or refer it for enforcement to whoever is authorized to do so. I will let Scott talk about this part.
A couple of city managers go split some of the code enforcement responsibilities and gave some specifically to the police department. They're pretty much non-community risk type things, more blight, if you will. The only health-related one would be excessive accumulation of garbage or trash on the exterior of a house. When it comes to some of the community risk code enforcement that might come through assessing zoning based on inspections or anything like that, the police department...and again, prior to myself being chief, came to the police department to sign the municipal civil infractions before they are issued. I have assigned that specifically to the detective, even though, believe me, he's got enough work to do. But all this we're doing, all his assignment is to verify the name, identity, and full personal information as required on a ticket that the court requires, so we're issuing it to the correct person. Assessing has access usually to a first and last name only when it comes to identifying the person. So I've assigned our detective to do the rest of the identity and to sign the ticket. Therefore, if this does end up in court, whoever signed that ticket's going to be subpoenaed to court. Police Department's not gonna pay overtime for somebody to go to court to say, "I verified the name and signed the ticket." the name and signed the ticket." Because that's all they can testify to, they cannot testify to the violation because we don't investigate the majority of those. So that's the police department's heart and responsibility of code enforcement when a civil infraction citation is issued for a code violation. I believe one of your questions related to parking in lawns, that is one of those that falls upon the police department. And what, again, was established prior to myself being chief by a prior city manager, was a specific number, and there's probably about eight that were developed, and door hangers were developed with those. And if we get a specific complaint for one of those types of violation, the officer attempts to make contact at the house, if we go and make contact, they check the box on the door hanger, give a specific amount of time, leave the door hanger there, and usually the property owner or occupant will contact us and will try to resolve it that way. About 99% of our parking enforcement or citations are on the street related or in a parking lot such as the handicapped parking zone. Maybe 1% or less is parking on lawn. When it comes to that, excuse me, the officers have to identify, excuse me, if there's a violation or not. If the vehicle is parked, what ordinance states ahead of the setback line, which we consider the front line of the house. If it's ahead of that, it has to be on an improved surface. So grass is not improved, grass run down, the dirt's not improved. If it brings stone, gravel, blacktop, concrete, we consider that improved surface. We do get complaints about residents parking on the front lawn, we go there, you can see there's stone, but there's grass growing up, we consider that a nonviolation, even though usually the complaint is not happy with the resolution because they don't want the neighbor parking in the front yard, but that's an improved surface, they made the effort, they paid the money. This time of year, frankly, our officers don't go and try to clear the snow off from a front lawn to see if there's any type of improvement to it. The other issue with that is it's very common that when we do make contact on one of those violations, we get from the occupant that, "I've lived there just X amount of time, the landlord told me this is where I'm supposed to park." And then we work through it with their, with them, and generally we get, "Well, no, we're not allowed to park in the driveway, the other tenant gets the driveway." We try working with them to resolve that. Big issue generally is when a private residence in the north side of the city gets turned over to student housing, and now instead of one or two vehicles being at their houses, five or six vehicles with not enough space for them to park. And we usually deal with them on parking, to try to resolve that because it usually starts out with a lot of front lawn parking. But pretty much on the front lawn parking, we do it on a complaint basis.
Okay, so if you're, if I made it, if you're driving by and you see a car parked on the front lawn for months on end, there would be no.
They can and they should.
They can.
Unless it's priorly been determined that there is an approved surface there, it just doesn't appear so.
Well, there's a few that I can think of on Oak and Broad Street, South Broad Street across from the fairgrounds that have been.
One of those is one exactly like I'm talking about. I personally have been there, it is an improved surface, it just does not look like it.
That's unfortunate. The reason I brought it up, just so you understand, is I had a homeowner last year that was repainting, and they got a bike or whatever ticket for code enforcement because their house wasn't painted properly and they were in the middle of it. And then I had another one whose property had some damage in the bricks that were there when the property was purchased and it passed all inspections, and then all of a sudden they get a code enforcement violation. And they mentioned to me, "Why, why is it selective enforcement when there's cars parked on lawns all over the place?"
So those types of property maintenance issues, generally we don't issue a ticket unless we've tried to contact the owner and work out a plan with them with a timeline to correct it, and they haven't responded.
I appreciate that.
So I don't know, I don't know the specifics of which cases you're talking about, I'd be happy to look them up if you want, me too, but that's generally not how that's handled, there's usually more to it if a ticket's being issued. Because those are not safety violations, those would be considered, they're property maintenance violations, but they're more of a cosmetic nature.
I appreciate that. And then the last one, I know we have an ordinance concerning cars that don't have per registrations. Well, there's a house in My Ward that has two cars that are backed in that have been sitting in the same spot for at least five years. And, you know, it's.
So if they're backed in, so there's no other way for us to determine.
Right.
Whether or not they have front plates? The only way that we would enforce on that is that they are clearly inoperable. You know, if they have flat tires, broken windows, something along those lines, then we will enforce. But otherwise, unless we're receiving complaints, we're probably not even gonna look twice at them.
Understood.
There are some things that have happened nationally that hinder us on some of that stuff. One of the more recent things about three years ago was, if we were gonna enforce two-hour parking downtown, we're not allowed to mark the tires in any way. A court has ruled that that is a search. Short of getting a search warrant for an individual vehicle for park, which you're not going to get, and we're not gonna waste your time, we no longer can do the two-hour parking enforcement short of video from the downtown area and monitoring it for two hours. We have marked on the tire, but if you're marking the tire, you're searching that vehicle. It's a court ruling, I have it, it's about six pages long, I write the whole thing, but there are things that hinder us in certain areas that we're just not gonna open that can. We're not gonna go on somebody's back property to look to see if there's a registration plate and try to get a VIN number and get into a search and seizure issue.
I understand.
If it had something to do with community risk, definitely a hazard, we'll do what we need to do. I will go through the proper channels and take our time to do that. We have enough other things to do that we work as priority.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Kim. I appreciate you making the time.
And I just wanna add, we do have a complaint form on our website if someone sees a violation that they think needs to be acted on, and, you know, we will follow up on every complaint that's received. The complaint, it may not always be happy with what the resolution is, but we will follow up on them.
And also for someone cited, there's a place to.
There is, there is an appeal process for that as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Chief, thank you, Kim. I think, I think we do a pretty good job on our code enforcement, I do. I understand the kind of conundrum that, the code, our code is so voluminous and codes of that nature are written in a way that there pretty much is not a single house in Hillsdale that doesn't have some sort of code violation. So we get into where every time we enforce something, it feels like selective enforcement.
We always try to get a resolution and get compliance, it's not just, "You're in violation, here's enforced." That's, that's not what we do, that's not what their department does, that's not what our department does on these types of things. You know, the city wants a good resilience, city, they want one without a lot of blight, and you need compliance for that. We can write a ticket for being parked in the front lawn, it's just a parking ticket. There's no meat to that except for a $10 fine, we can pay the fine, you don't have to move the car. We can't go take the car. So we try to gain compliance before we get to that part where we're issuing tickets.
And I appreciate, I don't want any financial, I really don't want people to be financially troubled, I just would like to see them honor the code, so.
But anytime, when I get an email that she gets a complaint, if it's a parking issue, whatever, she pours it to the police department and we send somebody out.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, and thank you for adding that, so I always get to make sure we get that information out there, educate the public on those sorts of things, so. All right, we'll move on to communications petitions and move into introduction and adoption of ordinances, public hearing. The first item is public hearing, Special Assessment District, SAB 2205, and that's for Uran Street. I'm now going to open up the public hearing, and it says, now remember, this is just for Uran Street. We're gonna have two separate ones, the first one's for Uran, the second one's for Howell and Wood Memorial. At the February 7th, 2022 City Council meeting, the public hearing date of February 21st, 2022, was set to consider comments on the creation of the Uran Street Special Assessment District. Total estimated cost for this project is $320,000 with $284,300 being paid by the city and $35,700 being assessed to the property owners. Kristen, did you have anything to add to this?
No.
No?
No.
No, I mean, unless it's necess, is anybody, well, first of all, I'll open up the podium in case there's public comment. This is only for Uran Street, please limit your comments to three minutes, please limit your trips to one to the podium, and remember, all we're talking about is Uran Street right now. Podium's now open.
I just had a question, how the assessment was made, is it per parcel, per linear footage on the street? How is that number actually came, came to be? How was that assessed?
Kristen, can you answer that, please?
It's a per parcel, it's per parcel cost.
Per parcel?
Yes.
So let's say you have, it's, I don't know how many is on that street, there's probably one, two on one side.
There's eight total.
Eight, so that amount was actually still just eight times?
Well, so we said a maximum amount of $5,000 per parcel. So it's, and that is for every developed parcel. What's the language on the 25% of, on any empty parcel, it's a slightly different ordinance language on that?
So no parcel, sorry, can you stand up so we can hear? No parcel, what are our charter, or our ordinance, I forget what it is. No parcel can be assessed for more than 25% of the value of the property. So if the value is below $25,000 for that piece of property, which is generally just gonna be.
Vacant lots.
Then we will assess them at 25% of their value.
So for anything that's developed, we set a maximum amount that can be assessed per parcel at $5,000. And then there's a slightly different maximum for these empty lots or for the charter notice.
Great, so that value is, is different per parcel?
No, it's the same for everybody. Same for everybody except the vacant lots.
Okay, so I guess that was my, it seemed to me unfair to me because there's one side of the street, there's two parcels. The other side of the street, there's four or five, I believe?
There's many, many different ways to do special assessment districts, and the city, by other policy that we presented last year, set our means and methods of doing that on a per parcel basis with a flat fee, maximum flat fee. Now, it can go down depending on the cost of the project because it is a 50-50 shared cost. So with eight parcels, we won't likely get there, so in all likelihood, that will be $5,000. But in some of the bigger special assessment districts, that could go down because we don't assess more than, we share the costs, the city would pay 50%, the owners would pay 50%. In this case, the city's paying 80% when we're probably assessing 20, and that's just literally off the top of my head. But that $5,000 was established by policy last year by council and city staff.
And I'm assuming it's set in stone right now, or that could be changed, or?
I guess that, in the end, I believe that that's up to council, but I can't say if it's set in stone. I don't know what you, how you would answer that, Dave. I mean, it's been the policy, and I assume we continue to follow that policy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. What was your name, sir?
My name is Dewey Rogers.
My name is Clark Leonard. Very good. Any more comment on the special assessment for Uran Street?
Jack McLean, I guess, like Dewey's talking, he's across from Dowell County or Dupont, they own 1,000 feet of road frontage, he owns 150 feet maybe, and they're paying the same amount that he's paying. I don't see the justice in that at all.
Thanks, Jack, I think you came to the wrong place if you're looking for justice when you're in government.
What's that?
So I think you came to the wrong place if you're looking for justice.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Any more public comment on Uran Street? Seeing none, we'll close the podium, open up the table for discussion at council level. Anybody got anything? Councilman Soha?
If the assessment doesn't pass, does the project go forward?
No. That's the policy that we established last year.
And if I'm understanding, on Uran Street, there's also a grant involved?
Correct.
For the city?
Correct.
Can you help me understand the grant?
The grant pays for a portion of the city's side of the equation.
Is that state funded?
So we would just, we would return the grant as unused.
So the Condon's also, well, at least Curtis Condon from Hillsdale Terminal wrote a letter in opposition. And it looks like, last time I looked, so did Drew Homavec, and that would be Homavec Industries, Core Coil Composites, which is part of the oil that filled up to a property. Where are we at with official opposition to it? Because we gotta always look at what the numbers say on these things.
There was just those two, those two that provided the written, written letters.
Okay.
And I think what you're going to hear is, the argument is the same, we pay taxes, we don't, and this is for this one and the next one, we pay property taxes, so we feel that our roads should be taken care of. I think, you know, to explain that a little bit more, and why this is necessary, so for example, when you're looking at, I'm gonna use Uran on this, this example. So one person for roads, or one parcel, might pay $800 on their total property tax bill for a year on roads. Well, this project's $320,000. So if you've got 10, or eight parcels there, and they average, say, $800, at 10 years, that only generates $64,000 in taxes over 10 years. So quite simply, you, one would, the city would have to save up for years with no maintenance just to be able to redo the roads. So the idea with the special assessments was, we talked about wanting to get the roads done quicker than that pay-as-you-go mentality, which is where we were at, you know, in the last, you know, prior to the last couple of years. The same thing applies on Hollow Street. If you look at the homes on Hollow Street, they're, what, the city gets for road maintenance and road repair is about $250 on average a year. You know, people don't necessarily understand, they said that we, they pay taxes, but only a small portion goes towards road maintenance and repair. So, so there's 20 houses on Hollow Street, if you times that, times $250, it ju, it over 10 years, it generates $50,000. That project is $460,000. And I know that, you know, taxes in general are not a positive thing, or even special assessments, but there is no way the city, and that's what we talked about, there's no way the city can fund these projects without the assistance and get them done in a reasonable amount of time without special assessments.
It's true, it's true. And we have talked about, several times at this table, we've talked about the variety of funding options that we're gonna have to use. I think a little bit of the frustration comes from, and I talked to Dave about this earlier, this council put a millage on the ballot just last May, and I think it, you know, first of all, I had a problem with being on a May ballot, I hate May ballots, they're, barely anybody votes in May.
They're, uh, barely anybody votes in May elections, so you don't get a good, uh, you don't get a good standing of where the populace, how they really feel about the subject. But the millage passed, um, but I think a lot of the expectation, when council put that millage out there and passed, was that that was gonna get the streets fixed. And it raised people's taxes, but it's not gonna just fix everyone's streets with the snap of a finger. Um, the other issue I think that we're really gonna run into moving forward is with the special assessment option, was that when we use it for someplace like Hillcrest or like Williamsport, those roads, um, would be on the absolute bottom of the list as far as priorities in getting them fixed, because there's no traffic on them, they're little cul-de-sacs, they're little one-way streets, they're small neighborhoods. Um, so special assessment is a, a more attractive option than for someplace like Howell, that's a busy, very busy, busy traveling street. So I do understand what people's frustrations are. Um, I mean, we're, we're kinda have to figure this out moving forward, whether or not. The only thing we can do is what we're doing right now, hold public hearings, go to the public, let them have their opportunity to speak and see what they really want, and then you guys vote how you're comfortable.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I, I think it's important also to mention because, you know, some of the state comments that have been made are that, you know, like with Howell, or, and the industrial park, are that others use the industrial park or deliver given services, those type of things. Those that don't live in the city, we have no ability to, to tax or to get revenue from. Um, so we, and, and our, our ability with the state is, is limited by grants that potentially come out, um, but they all have their, their requirements and strings as well. So we, we kind of balance those. You know, I saw one of the comments, well, you know, ripon was done and there wasn't special assessments. That's true, but the state didn't allow special assessments. That was specifically on that big of a grant, they said no special assessments could be instituted. Um, so it all depends on, you know, if there's a big grant that covers it, if we've gotta put city money in. What the special assessment, special assessments do is they help the entire community, right? So just like the, the west, or not the west, with, um, Hillcrest, um, in those areas, so they're paying special assessments into the pot, and that pot will help other areas of the city, um, to get done sooner. So it's kind of, we're all working together towards a common goal. If, if there were no special assessments, we wouldn't be building the momentum to get more streets done. And, and I can understand that. Um, you know, we spent quite a bit of time with the fair committee talking about this, the council, and it was felt, you know, to get the momentum going, um, that special assessments, um, would be applied to all projects moving forward unless they were not allowed by s- something.
And, and for clarification, the assessment is a one-time shot. I mean, they have like ten years to pay it, but it's not a profit tax that adds and adds and adds and stays and stays, it's paid and done.
Correct, and the max that it is that we established was five thousand, but if it comes in less?
Yes.
Um, then like, um, Hillcrest came in less because of the work. It all depends on the work that's being done, then it would be something less. Then you have, you can either pay it, um, in one payment, or you can break it up into up to ten, the ten payments. Kim, did you want to say?
Yes, I just wanted to add, um, the other positive with the special assessment is it does also apply to the properties that qualify for property tax exemption. So they're not paying into that millage, but they would be paying toward the special assessment fund, so.
So college, properties, hospital, they're all there, okay.
Yeah, no, nobody's tax exempt.
Yeah. Special assessment, so they all contribute on that. That's all I hear.
Yep. Councilman.
Um, Mayor, and what were the goals? One or two, was it roads was number one goal?
Yes, yes.
And then I know the city of people in Hillsdale passed the millage, the four mills, which everybody's saying.
Everyone, except unless you're the tax exemptor.
Um, so it's, it's kinda like, uh, the other people in the city of Hillsdale are helping out with the road funding projects. And I know anytime you talk about raising people's taxes, it gets kinda irate. But in the city of Hillsdale, we've kinda neglected the roads for, I don't know, I'm thinking, it's never been a priority probably in the last thirty years, if not longer.
Oh, for sure.
And they've only gotten deteriorated worse. And this council, and I believe the prior council, had a priority to address this issue. And if you just take the, take the, okay, the five thousand max, that's the worst-case scenario, over ten years, you're talking five hundred bucks a year. Uh, that works out to just forty-one dollars a month. Take it, that, that's a dollar thirty-seven a day. And all you need to do, really go up to Hillcrest, go up to that area, drive it down, and, and look at all, uh, the change in that neighborhood after, uh, we did the special assessment district up there and, uh, the property owners are putting new driveways in because now the, their driveway isn't as good as the road, so this improvement, I think there was just, uh, Kimberly could probably, uh, uh, so, I think a house just sold up there for quite a bit for the size.
There's been several that are sold since.
I mean, that were above value, taxable value and everything else, and, um, and it's, it, it's really hard to make the right decision, but I just have to reiterate that, uh, the council, as a council as a whole, as a priority, we have roads right at the top of that.
Thank you, Councilman Beer. Okay, is Dewey still here?
Yes, I am.
How do you feel about it on Uran Street, Dewey? Just trying to get a good count of the numbers here.
I don't have a problem with the special assessment. I understand property owners should probably kick in to pay for some of that. Especially the ones that have a large parcel and all the big trucks that go down the road. They're the ones that actually just probably destroyed the street in the first place. So I would think that it would be, you know, figured on square footage or road frontage distance, not necessarily per parcel. Um, like I say, I don't have a problem with the special assessment, um, but I think five thousand dollars per parcel on that street is a bit excessive for me and the other, say, two or three next to me, which are rather small. And don't necessarily have the big truck traffic that destroyed the road in the first place, so.
Thank you, Dewey. So would you say you're in favor of it or you're opposed to it? As it stands right now, okay, I'll be honest, just.
The road needs fixed, that's for sure.
Okay.
Okay. If I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
Then how this was, and, and what are you saying, we completely understand, you know, because you have big parcels with lots of linear frontage. And we, as a staff, went through that over and over, trying to come up with something that was fair, that wasn't excessive for any one particular property owner. I mean, we understand exactly what Dewey's indicated, you know, Dowell has a lot of trucks that go down that road or other businesses, um, where he doesn't. But it, as I said, we, we struggled over, Kristin's done all, all the different types, and we felt this was probably the most fair. Is it perfect? No, not by any means. Um, but it, it did, uh, provide us with the ability to move it, move something forward that could help contribute to, to that.
Sure. Okay, um, any more discussion on Uran Street?
Well, I just gotta, on that disproportionate amount for the property owners, I think when we were discussing this as council, we were kinda zeroed in on the residential areas, and we were concerned that a, a property owner on a corner lot that would have a lot more road frontage would be, uh, hurt a little bit more than someone that has a, you know. And I think that's where the council decided on just doing the one cost, the only district to work out with between all the parcels.
That sounds accurate, Councilman Beer. Any more discussion on Uran Street? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. May I please have a roll call vote, City Clerk?
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Cray?
Yes.
Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Stocker?
Yes.
Councilperson Soha?
No.
And Brainerd?
Yes.
We have seven, one approved. It's resolution three, four, eight, nine.
Thank you. And we will close the public hearing, and now I'll open up the second public hearing. This is particularly for Hollow Street, which I think is what the majority of people are here for. So please, um, limit your trips to one to the podium, please limit your comments for three minutes. And if you would do me a favor and state whether you are a resident of Hollow Street or if you're just here to speak, like Jack, just here to speak, so, um, that would, Doc just asked me as a personal favor, you don't have to if you don't want to, but, uh, the podium's now open.
I don't know if there's any rhyme or reason in terms of, because there's a lot of us here, but
Yeah.
I got up first.
Yep, the lowest.
And I'm just gonna put this here so I stay within your three minutes. Actually, I figured it'd be a lot shorter than that. My name's Ken Cole, I live at one sixty-three South Hollow Street, obviously that is in this acronym of SAD, since S A D is very sad in terms of what you've had to do to get roads fixed. We've lived on, well, it's coming July, it'll be forty years, so we've been around a while, that road's been fixed a few times. Not once have I had to come to this council to talk about the cost, and since we're talking about cost here, and you just discussed with the Uran, a lot of things about cost, from funding to, um, money being put in by property owners that will go into the pot and be there and available for other roads, and that's not my understanding. My understanding, I see what this project costs, and the property owners on South Hollow will pay in the amount that's a little bit under a hundred thousand dollars. And as you stated, there is a lot and a lot of traffic on that road. So it's for the property owners to pay for the repair of that road, it's unfair. I just want you to know, my wife and I are strongly opposed to that. Yes, property taxes are paid, and there's no way they're gonna cover the cost of that road. It seems like you're getting grants. Um, I think the infrastructure bill was passed here at the end of last year. I don't know the process there, but there, there must be some money there. I know that, um, from the earlier bill that was passed, the county's working on what they're gonna do with eight point some million dollars. Uh, I don't know if that's a viable means of, of funding, but it just seems to me that the city could come up with at least a hundred thousand dollars to pay for a stretch of road that is just used by probably almost everyone if they head out of town. Now, I heard the comment made that SAD is going to be used in, in this manner as we go forward, so that was just decided recently? Is that, is that correct? That the special assessment district process is gonna be used? I mean, this is six, so this must be what, the sixth one?
In almost mo- in almost all occasions, it looks like this is the funding method that we'll, that we will use. Of course, we'll keep, continue to seek out grants and things of that nature, so.
Okay, I've got thirty seconds, I'll be outta here. It isn't five hundred dollars, it's six percent. I don't know where the six percent came from, but if you pay your five hundred dollars to start with, then you're gonna pay seven hundred and seventy the next year, seven hundred and forty the next, if you continue to pay the six percent. Ray, you're the banker, where did six percent come from? My last question, that's three minutes.
That comes from the charter.
Charter says six percent?
Six percent, yes.
You guys know where rates are these days? You don't know where they're gonna be in ten years, six percent's very high.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Podium's still open.
Frank Clerk, uh, Lynwood, uh, by looking at it, because quite often we see the funds for the roads getting distributed, uh, mainly on the roads that quite often are used, Howell quite often is used, uh, which makes sense, but, uh, then it comes down to there's not much left over, and the residential areas get hit or left behind. Uh, when it comes to this, uh, and I'm specifically gonna speak on this one, I see Howell Street very expensive to fix, and yet you're gonna tag in Maury and Lynwood to take burden of that cost. Uh, I don't quite understand why they're thrown in because the amount that's gonna be put in onto Howell, and the amount of work that's done on Howell is not gonna be anywhere here near equal to Maury Street, Orlandwood Street, and yet they're going to have to pay the same amount. Also, the taxes that we pay for roads, uh, people who live on the very commonly repaired roads pay the same amount of tax as everybody else, but they get to watch while everybody else's roads get fixed and there's don't. Uh, this is quite a huge issue to then turn around, leaving them behind, having them drive for five, ten years in potholes, and then going, you need to pay extra.
Can I ask a few more questions, Dave?
What's that question?
Can I answer a few more questions?
Yes.
Okay, so road fund, I don't wanna go into a long dissertation on road funding, but first of all, the only part of your tax bill that you get twice a year that goes to roads is the two hundred and fifty dollars that Dave was speaking to. And that's only because our charter requires, uh, two and a half percent, and then the past millage. So those two numbers are the only funds that come out of your tax bill. Roads are funded by what's called gas tax, so when you go to the gas pump and you pump gas, that then goes to the state. The state says, Hillsdale, you have this many miles of major streets, this many miles of local streets, here's money for that. But out of those funds, you have to plow the roads, fill the potholes, deal with sidewalks, deal with street signs, deal with pavement markings. By the time we take all of those operational expenses out for Mr. Adams' department, we have about a hundred thousand dollars that we could put towards maintenance of roads. On the, and that's on the major street side. We get much, much less funding. It's a, I calculated it a couple of years ago, you get six thousand dollars a mile for a local street, that's based on population and mileage. So the operational cost for the local street side, he runs blue, black, or red every year to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars. So the city has to take funds from the charter money to pay for the operational expenses that leave zero money for maintenance. That's why you see maintenance on the major streets like Howell and Bacon and some of those bigger streets, and not on the local street side. Most, I've been in four municipalities, I would say the lion's share of municipalities, either put general fund money toward the roads or have a specialist, or have millages and special assessment districts. Unfortunately, the city of Hillsdale for years previous chose not to do that. And seventy-five percent of these roads are considered failed on the scale that we rate every road in. So that's a very quick dissertation on road funding. And, and the long and short of it all is, what we get from the state for gas tax, because they've not kept up with the cost of everything it takes to do this, falls way short. Now, the infrastructure bills that one gentleman alluded to, um, I did an analysis a couple of years ago in another municipality, all the infrastructure bills that the, the governor wanted to do, by the time it filtered down through MDOT for all their grant programs, them putting money on their interstates, the city that I was working with yielded thirty thousand dollars in additional funds. So I can't come up with another hundred thousand dollars to add to the funds because what they're giving in these infrastructure bills just isn't keeping up and not paying muster. So I, just to answer questions so everybody had that information, I wanted to share that.
Thank you. It's still roads to burden on the people who are hit with these extra taxes, and not any extra on the people who constantly have their roads done. And like I said, on this one, there's two streets that are being added into this, that are gonna pay a portion of another street, which then if you're going to bundle it that way and force people who shouldn't be paying a larger amount to do it, then bundle the whole city together. Because for anyone on Maury or Lynwood should not be brunting the cost of Hollow Street.
You're not necessarily, because everybody, so by having a bigger special assessment district, we can spread the cost of the whole project over, we, we learned this lesson last year with the special assessments we did. We had one area that had nine properties, we had one area that had forty or fifty. So when it was all said and done, and I split the costs and I resolved all the numbers, their assessment came in under five thousand dollars. By virtue of the fact they had more numbers in the special assessment district. So by grouping this project into a bigger group, the So by grouping this project into a bigger group, the potential for bringing it down below five thousand is greater, because if I only assess Maury Street, which only has four properties, they're gonna be stuck with a five thousand dollar assessment. It's kinda like, I told the gentleman on your end, Street, I'm not gonna be able to bring that project in at a, at a cost that will lower that below five thousand dollars. I know that just from simple math. There's some potential to be able to do it in this area, I don't know yet, but, because it all just kinda depends on what we find once we expose. Howell Street's a little bit more expensive, because the pavement is thicker, because it is a major street, and we have to accommodate bigger loaded trucks and all that, than the amount of asphalt we'll put on Maury and Lynwood. Although I would say what we put on Maury and Lynwood should be far greater than what's been there ever, so it'll be a much better road. But that's why we moved it into one big group, was the potential to try to have a bigger way to spread it out.
I've already used my time, so...
Oh, no, I took some of your time.
Did you have something else you wanted to add? Move further on?
There was confusion, uh, about whether a sidewalk was going to be put on, on Maury or Lynwood. I, and, okay...
The only thing we are required by law to do is upgrade the ADA ramps at the corners to current they stand, and if, if they're already there, we're not gonna mess with them. If they're not, I think the only ones that we have to do is on Howell and Allen.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I think moving forward, all we're gonna do is, we'll, Kristen, Jake, any of our admins that are here that have information they think is pertinent, I think we'll, if somebody's at the podium, we'll let them say whatever they need to, and then we'll adjust the, uh, answers after that, so we can make sure we're equitable with the time here. So, thank you guys so much for being here tonight, and it is invaluable to have you, Jake and Kristen and Kim and everybody here to, the chief, to answer questions as they're needing to be answered, but just trying to work on this in a more orderly fashion. Podium's still open.
Hi, I'm Michelle Rogers. I live on Howell Street, right across from the hospital. Um, I just have a couple of questions based on things that you've said tonight. Um, I did send a letter in earlier, and I know that you have that, so, um, as you stated, there are twenty-ish houses on the, the Howell Street section, and it would take a very long time for the vehicles in our twenty houses to cause the deterioration that is on Howell Street from the very large volume of traffic that's on Howell Street all day, all night. Um, also, the street was damaged on Howell Street because of the semi-trucks parking there when the McRitchie unit was built by the hu, by the hospital. Um, so I guess one of my questions is, is the hospital assessed at five thousand dollars like we are, or is it per unit or parcel, or however you would estimate the size of the hospital?
No, they're assessed by parcel, much like the conversation we had on your end, so they're, but they have two in, uh, they have three parcels. So they're gonna pay five, five thousand for each of the two parcels, and then the other one's a parking lot, so it's undeveloped and falls in that twenty, so their total assessment's about thirteen thousand.
My other question is, so you say that you're gonna keep the special assessments in place from now on to fix the roads. Um, the traffic will not change on Howell Street, it will continue, so we get it fixed, but we're still gonna have a large volume of traffic, it's gonna take me ten years to pay off the five thousand dollars, and so how long will it last before Howell Street needs to be fixed again, and I'm assessed another five thousand dollars?
Well, the useful, the useful life un-maintenanced is fifteen to eighteen years on a road, once we pave it. That's un-maintenance. So the, and with the staff that we have on board and the means and methods that we have, you know, in a couple of years, we'll start doing crack filling, we'll start doing sealing, and that maintenance, so that pushes that years out. So effectively, you could get twenty-five to thirty years out of the pavement, assuming that the, the folks that are here now and the ones that follow us continue to follow the means and methods that we're taught as far as road maintenance and continuing to maintain our assets. I can't promise it, because I'll only be here for however long I'm here, but that is, you know, Mr. Hamel is in this position five years and has improved our road inf, uh, road system greatly in the five years that he's been in this position, doing the maintenance tasks that he needs to do.
My other question is, you said it was two hundred and fifty dollars for the streets from our taxes, but mine was three hundred and two dollars. I just ended up, so is, how is, did I miss it, how it was done?
No, I think, I think we just took an average of a house on the, on the street and ran numbers quickly this afternoon, anticipating a question as to, because a lot of people bring out this, streets are paid out of my taxes, and they're not, but there are some ways we do it here in the city, I can't remember what you call them, but diff, are, um, the three and a half and two and a half that are stipulated by charter and ordinance, um, I just wanted to make sure that people know that that bill of that will, this much is going to you, to your bill, and it, it's based on your equalized value. So some may, the average was two fifty, but there's some could be higher, some could be lower. But I would, we will say, the hospital, churches, college, it's zero. They'd be nothing towards any of that. So that's why this S A D is a good means and method for us to utilize, so that they are paying at least part of some of that maintenance.
Um, so I guess I have another question. So, like, the hospital, do it, am I on time?
Yeah, I'm gonna let, let, no, you can, you can ask your next question. Moving forward, we'll have people at the podium.
No, I'm happy to be down, I know the three minute rule, so...
And then we'll answer the questions from there, so we're not getting into...
That was my fault.
Okay, well, my last comment is this, I understand special assessments in an area like Hillcrest, that is a neighborhood called the Sex. Only the people that live up there basically are traveling on those roads, and many of those people are very happy to pay the special assessment, because they're benefiting from those roads. Not that I'm not benefiting to pay this for, for a new road, but it is so heavily traveled. It is like the, one of the main entrances and exited, exits in the southern part of our city, and I am very opposed to this assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Podium's still open.
Yeah, my name's William O'Halley. I'm a proud owner of a home in Hillsdale the last twenty-one plus years, and I live at two thirty South Howell Street. First, I wanna say I love the enthusiasm of wanting to fix the streets, it needs to be done, I think that's great, okay? I gave you a letter, I pointed that out right from the start with a positive. I, I love it, I want that swamp fixed on South Howell, and that swamp on Maury, I, it needs to be fixed. I won't drive on Lynwood, I let my car coast as far as I can, because I don't want it to get messed up. So, keep coming up with ways for funding, that's great, okay? And in my letter, I came up with a idea, a sales tax, half a percent. Six and a half! Has anybody done a survey or a study, a cost analysis? I'll buy a car that's still well-furnished, a fifty thousand dollar car, I'll pay an extra, whatever it is, I'm not gonna drive to Coldwater, but I have an educated, intelligent friend that says I go by your house four or five times a week. I'm not paying to get that fixed, am I? Well, he goes to Walmart and he goes to other places, put the sales tax in, half a percent, six and a half, half a percent. If I buy gas, if I go to Kroger, if I buy a prescription, what's wrong with the sales tax? I'm not here to complain, I'm here to give you an idea. You know, I'm not here to complain. I understand that there needs to be, the roads fixed. I think it's great, I want them fixed. I'm willing to chip in a few bucks, but, yeah, maybe I've got the five thousand. I'm here for the people that don't have the five thousand. Okay, I don't care about me, I care about the people that don't have the five thousand. Okay? A sales tax, everybody pays it. You go in, you go out, everybody. Adam, what's wrong with the sales tax? Give me one good reason. I don't know about that.
I, I can give you one good reason, and the reason is that cities and local municipalities are not allowed to assess the sales tax, only the state of Michigan can.
I, is this in Michigan? I live in a town in Arizona, it's like eight point seven five.
Different states.
It's a tourist town, everybody pays, and nobody complains.
Yes, you can, you can do it in Ohio, for example, but you can't...
Oh, okay, well, see, I didn't know that. So my idea's no good? Well, I, I came here with the solutions. Okay, I didn't come here to complain. You know, if I have to pay the five thousand, I'll do it, but get the roads fixed. I like, I like the enthusiasm, that you wanna fix the roads, I think that's great. I'll spread mine over ten years, is that, is that okay? I'll send you a check for five hundred, but let's get them fixed. Let's get, I like the, I like the enthusiasm, I like the idea that you're gonna fix the roads, and I'm willing to pay for it, but I, I wrote a letter of objection, but aren't there other ways of funding? I don't know, I'm just, see, I learned something today, I didn't know that.
We're throwing everything against Walz.
I, I understand. Keep up the good work, Adam.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I do wanna answer a couple, a couple of Bill's questions. I, I've lived in a state that allows sales tax, as others have said, and that is a valuable tool in those states to do exactly what you're talking about, unfortunately, Michigan doesn't allow it. Um, but as the mayor said, we're looking at everything, and one of the, Mr. Cole had mentioned about the ARCA funds, so, and Bill mentioned about the swamp there, and, and we're very cognizant of that, because we wanna try to fix that problem. And, you know, the, the city council approved some monies to take that out for engineering to see what our solutions are. And we've got some, the engineers have done the surveying work, they've given us preliminary information, um, the cost of fixing that intersection is seven hundred and fifty to one point one million dollars. Uh, so, that needs to be done as part of this project. What we're se, as a staff are, are looking at is, I mean, we've got one more component of those ARCA funds that are coming this year, about four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if we can do the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar fix and use the ARCA funds, which are allowed for storm sewer, that brings that drainage cost or the fix of that down to about something that we can manage as, as a city. So it's kind of, if, if, if Maury and Howell are very much tied together, particularly because of that, fixing that problem, and we may, um, we talked about some of the residents there, uh, or talked to them about, um, some options, those that could help, like Mr. Burbner, um, as a possibility, and with that lot he owns there, so we're looking at different options there, but inevitably, it's gonna be very costly to fix that problem. If we don't do Maury and Howell together, the, the, the economics don't work, and so they need to come as a package, um, particularly to fix that. I mean, we could separate those two roads off from, from Lynwood, just do Lynwood, but if, if we're going to fix that problem from Maury and for Howell there, where you live, Bill, that, those streets have to be a package, otherwise economically it doesn't work, uh, for the city to do them.
Thank you, Dave, thank you. Councilman Beer?
Where's that pond that, on Howell Street, is that two oh nine South Howell?
Yes.
Is that two oh nine South Howell? Because I lived there for a long time, I'm sixty-six now, I haven't been there for, but I grew up there, and that was Pudle Lot back in the seventies. They had some issues back then, so, and nothing's really been done with that for that length of time, so I can't imagine it being any better, Pudle Lot worse.
Yeah, and Bill lives right there, Councilman, um, in that area, so he knows exactly, it's, it rains, that'd be, it's a, a pond.
Two thirteen, two oh nine.
Two thirteen, go ahead, Randy. Yeah, these, uh, you know, Tom brought up a good point, because Bill's idea really was, really isn't a bad idea, and we've looked at, this is the ten-year conversation that we're still working on, so, you know, a lot of these issues are state issues, and I hate to be the politician that, uh, that passes the buck on to the next level, but really, guys, when you get out and vote in state elections, talk about what's going on locally at your local level, at your local level, because these turds in Lansing, they just keep taking more and more and more from the municipalities, they keep giving less and less and less back every year. It's all about centralizing authority, and they're, they're taking our money, but they're not giving it back to us, and we really need to start making the changes at the state level to where we're able to keep more of our money, and it's not going to Lansing for them to use on grants for, um, well, there's a million ridiculous ones I could tell you, they, uh, they have cakes that go in urinals that say no, like a forty thousand dollar grant they spent on us. Those things add up, billions of dollars every year that I hand out in grants while our streets fall apart, and then we're left holding the bag, trying to figure out how to fix our streets with nothing in McKinney. So, the podium's still open.
Jake McClain again. I was sure you guys voted on the percentage of interest that people were gonna pay, 'cause I thought at one time you even talked about three. Yeah, that happened, so it's, it's not set at six. They voted on it. My other question is, and Dave, this is, you still getting your bonus for the roads that are finished? Like your contract? You got a bonus for the amount of roads that were finished? Are you still getting that bonus?
It's part of my current contract, yes.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that.
May I get a clarification?
Yep, well, I, I...
You said that the set rate is three, but you said it was six, what, what you say?
I didn't say that.
We talked about rates.
They talked about different percentages.
From three to six.
Well, I'm not even sure it was three.
It was, I think we're talking about setting it lower, or setting it at whatever current rates were, but you never knew what rates were gonna do.
So you're predicting the future?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, that was one of my last questions, was on that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And then the city manager gets a bonus for every street that's finished.
Then, Dave?
May I explain this?
No, let me explain it, because I was a big proponent of adding that to your contract. If you have, anybody here, anybody here ever worked in sales? Dennis? Okay. Tony, I've worked in sales. You give salespeople commission, it's incentive to sell, and the reason that all companies give it to their salespeople is because it works. Well, we came up, and I think this was absolutely brilliant idea, and Councilman Bell was a huge part of it, Councilman Morrissey, I was a big part of the conversation, we came up with the idea, since the streets haven't been getting fixed in this city for generations, we're talking fifty, sixty years, we came up with the idea that we would put it in his contract, that we wouldn't give him as much money as we would have normally offered him, but we were gonna also offer what would be basically performance-based pay, a commission for how many miles of streets were fixed a year. And that was to laser focus our city manager's attention on fixing streets. That's not to say that Dave wouldn't have been working on that before, but it is to say that as businessmen such as myself, who's worked in the business world, that sees how performance-based pay works, that I think government can actually borrow a lot of practices from business, and I think we'd be a lot more efficient if we did. And I think doing things like giving your economic development person a commission-based contract instead of just a base salary, and saying, the more taxpayer, the more taxpaying economic businesses you bring into the city, the more money you're gonna make each year, um, I don't think that's a bad idea. So yes, Dave gets a bonus, if more street, street work gets done. It's a business practice, and, you know what, when I ran for mayor, I said I wanted to, I wanted to see the city operate more like a business than a governmental unit that just wastes and drains money and, and strains at a nap and forces you to swallow a camel, so. Thank you for bringing that up, Jake, I think it was a damn good idea, and I still...
I'm not saying it was a bad idea, I think it was a good idea, I just, the people don't know, so...
Yeah.
And I think it should also be pointed out that, you know, we're talking a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars at the most, so, Jack, when you allude to, I'm getting a bonus, like it's some major, I'm getting fifty thousand dollars, it's a thousand bucks, to make sure that I get one half, um, one half a mile of road done each year. And I will say that Jake will back me up on this, we've done twice, if not more than that amount every year, and I get no more. So, it, you know, it, it's not necessarily a bad thing, I agree to it, is it done anywhere else in the state? Not that I'm aware of, but...
I think it's brilliant, I thought it was brilliant.
I agree to it, and, and I think council focusing on this is... But I, I agreed to it, and, and I think council focusing on this is important, I agree.
Okay, podium's still open.
My name's Heidi Gothenauer, I live at thirty-eight East Linwood, right directly across from the hospital. Most of my questions have been answered since I got ready, but, um, my concern as well as a few other people is the hospital traffic. With living right across from the hospital, they, I know they have several parking lots, but they also park on Linwood on a daily basis, the employees do there. The amount of traffic, they use the road way more than I do, I am glad to hear that they're included in the special assessment, but it doesn't seem fair to me the amount for the amount of traffic between ambulances, the fire department, daily. And they literally park on that road every single day, their employees do, in front of my house, so. I object right now that I, it's not in my budget, I don't feel it's feasible for me, so, thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Any more public comment? All right, folks, I'm gonna close the podium. So, can we do, uh, hands in the air, how many people here live on Linwood, Howell, or Maury? How many are in favor of the special assessment? So you're all here in opposition to it? Okay, how many letters did we get in opposition to it? Five, we got five letters, what percentage is that? What?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent?
I think we have fifty... No, ten. Yeah, we have fifty-eight properties.
Okay. Okay, five letters and fifty-eight properties. We'll open up the table.
I have the letters, my le- do you need my letter or my objection here?
Yes. It has to be in writing.
We'll, we'll call that six, give, give it to the clerk and we'll pound it, six letters. That's not, all, all that's, all that's four is my mind, Ken.
So if we get over fifty percent of the people in that special assessment district, it changes from a simple majority vote to a, to a super majority vote. So instead of a five-four vote, it would have to be a seven to nine.
Any discussion at the table, I know we've discussed it a lot, Councilman Soha?
Um, Mr. Mackey, if this did not pass, what would be the, 'cause I mean, these last few storms, Howell's just gone into terrible disrepair.
It has.
Um, what would be the prospect to? Pay more for property?
Well, if, uh, if, as I s- uh, mentioned earlier, we could split off Linwood if, um, because it seems like most of the opposition is on Howell Street. So we could split off Lin- uh, Howell, Maury would have to go with it, and so would the drainage, um, the drainage, um, repair. So Linwood couldn't move forward, but the other two and the drainage repair would remain as they are.
Any more council discussion? Councilman Beer?
Probably, um, all the people that came out, uh, opposed the project, uh, do understand that if council by your wishes votes this project down, that it's gonna be years before it comes up for discussion again and for the roads to be looked at in your area. Because we're gonna, well, the council, as we did last year, uh, we had a small project that went down off Howell Street, now just from you guys. And then we had people come from Williams Court, and the money got diverted to Williams Court. Uh, and they have a new street where the people that voted against it will not have a new street for the foreseeable future. And so if this council decides to vote because of the, uh, everyone here against it, like your street, because you aren't gonna get a new one. And the money that we're, the city was gonna spend on your street is gonna go to some other street, some people that want it. And that's just, uh, and it's not gonna be like, all of a sudden you come back and say, well, what about our street? You won't be under dis- uh, discussion on that, just saying, so.
And you, Councilman Beer, any more discussion? Councilman Soha? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, is the city able to do an income tax?
We looked at an income tax, we put it on the ballot, a November ballot, by the way. We had a huge turnout and it was shot down by about seventy-five percent of the population of Hellsdale. So it's clear that the city, the residents of Hellsdale don't wanna city income tax. They didn't ten years ago, right, things could've changed.
Well, when your top five employers in the, in the city are nonprofits, and they're not paying property taxes, but yet they own a decent amount of property, that is one way for a city to get something in return for not having a property tax. Um, it would probably be a decent number that we could utilize for road repairs. Um, that's another option, funding option, like you said, we looked at it ten years ago, it was turned down tremendously. Um, I'm assuming probably a lot of people that work in those places, but live in town too and go on to pay the income tax, but you know, that's, that's another thing to look at, um, the special assessment districts is kind of what we've looked at as far as getting roadworks done, because we've put it off for so, so long. I'm, I'm only thirty-three, and I, in the last two to three years, I've seen more roadwork done than I ever have. I mean, the only roadwork I remember when I was a kid was N-ninety-nine, that was state-funded. Any other roads, I don't remember getting done.
Garden, vine, need ripoff is more roadwork than has ever been done.
That's exactly, and that was two, three years ago, so. That's, I mean, I'm, that's just a thought, I'm, I don't know, I don't know, would be interested, people would be interested in an income tax m- or not now, or? But the, the only way we're gonna fix roads is if we put money up for it. Um, you know, we take in about three million in property taxes, we spend about two and a half million for police, fire, and DPS. So that's, that's where our funds for our property taxes are going. Um, police, fire, DPS, we could cut police department, we could cut fire, but I think the people that live in the city of Hillsdale value those things and the safe community that we have. Um, so that's other, other things too that we could look at is going through and start sharpening our pencils and cutting things out of our budget. You know, we could go down to twelve police officers instead of having sixteen or seventeen. We could go down to two full-time firefighters and maybe do part-time, you know, that's, that's the other option that we have here. I mean, if people are, look at other special assessment districts. That's why.
No, that's definitely a big picture conversation.
Yeah, I mean. Those are all things we can do.
There's lots of things that we could look at, and we've looked at a good number of them, so. Councilman Soha, you got something?
I just, I am generally opposed to taxes and I despise them, um. I, I hate the idea of this, I voted against most of the special assessment districts. Um, I'm one of the people that drive on South Howell every day, uh, pretty much every day, sometimes twice on Sundays. I understand, I, I, I want you to know I'm, I'm really conflicted here because, um, paying the main entrance into the city and having all those puddles to navigate is, is a terrible inconvenience to everybody, the, the car damage, um, everything. I want you to know too that my wife and I, we live on Broad Street, so, um, we'll probably never have a special assessment 'cause the state funds that road. But we chose to voluntarily pay a five thousand dollars to the city, and we paid our first five hundred dollar increment last fall, um, to be in solidarity, because we want to see the city improve. And you know what? Um, if we don't dig deep and do something now, the, the city's just gonna continue to deteriorate and the roads won't get fixed, and like Mr. Mackey, when I asked him, would this project get done? When he just looked down and shook his head and said, I don't, I don't know, right? There's, there's no foreseeable future. Um, the way that we've written our law is if, if we vote this down, um, then the whole project just disappears. So that, I guess there could be options to draw new special assessments or whatever, but that just takes time and consideration. So I, I know it's, it, it would be a sacrifice. Um, but as I'm just sitting here, you know, Benjamin Franklin said, on important subjects, when I'm fuller consideration and understanding, I'm, I'm apt to change my mind. And, and maybe we don't just see it as, oh, my little house here, five feet, and these trucks that were building, the addition of the hospital tore my street up, or these people that are working at the hospital park and the oil in their car drips on the asphalt and it deteriorates faster, and it's frustrating to see, I get that. Um, but there's no, can't, we can't, uh, we can't increase sales taxes, right? Uh, the city doesn't want, the city doesn't want income taxes. Um, there, there is no other solution, and so I'm inclined to vote in favor of this.
Any more discussion? Councilman Rider?
Just one more thing to add to, you know, the hospital is gonna benefit greatly from this, um, you know, maybe, I don't know, are they, are they able to come forward and say I wanna pay more than what I'm assessed? Is that a possibility?
There's not a representative from the hospital here, Councilman Rider?
Well, just, I thought, you know, they, uh.
Well, I would say that, Councilman, um, as a couple council members actually committed to, um, um, making donations to the city that would go in the street fund, they could, um, contribute more. Um, this, this is, that doesn't mean it would necessarily offset, you know, the, the special assessments. Uh, but that discussion hasn't, hasn't occurred. Uh, they do know that they're, you know, that they would be required to pay the, the, uh, per parcel amount that was discussed. I think I've heard from, um, Mr. Hotshire that they're in support of it, I think the mayor might have.
Yep, yep, JJ contacted me and said that he was in support of it, which I completely expected.
Might be in support of it too.
So, uh, you know, that, it's, it's not out of, uh, question to inquire. Um, they wouldn't be, you know, required to do it, but, um, they might be willing to.
You know, and just thinking, you know, out loud here, um, I know with Dewey and Yurain Street, is there an option to do commercial property by square footage? Or do, are we set on five thousand for each parcel no matter what? Is there anything in our charter or anything maybe that?
The answer is no to anything in the charter, um, I'd have to lean on Kristen a little bit. Um, you know, we just felt that it was the most.
I'm just thinking like.
Equal way to do it, but, but we knew that there would be situations that would not be equitable.
Right, and this is, uh, a scenario like this, you know, where you have a commercial property surrounded by residential properties, the commercial property is gonna benefit greatly from this, kind of similar to what Dewey said with his property and the size of it compared to the other two parcels across the street. Do we have to look at every single special assessment district as five thousand piece? Or could we look at other avenues as far as the square or the road coverage?
As long as in, within the particular special assessment district, you treated all the properties the same way. So you couldn't treat some properties by footage and then the others, just paying the five thousand dollars a pop. But as to each separate special assessment district, you can make a determination to do them differently. If, if you wanted to.
Something where maybe we can look at that in this scenario? I mean, just a thought off the top of my head, then you're getting a fair payment of a s- a special assessment. I mean, it's, I think it's a little too late to go back through Dewey's scenario, but, you know, learn from your mistakes, I guess.
Well, um, as the state attorney mentioned, we, we could take, take a look at it, for sure. Um, the, one of the reasons why we chose to keep everyone the same also is because even if you get into subdivisions, your corner lots, you know, how do you treat them fairly?
That was the big thing.
Well, in a residential area, I'm perfectly fine with. Yeah, in a residential area, I'm fine with five thousand piece. But in this scenario where you're mixing industrial or commercial space with residential, you know, the residents end up losing in that scenario. It's just my luck.
Kristen, do you have any, have you seen a mixture or?
Well, in the Linwood and Maury area, the only property you're actually talking about that would be different, which is not exempt now, is the, is the, is the, uh, hospital. 'Cause all of the parcel properties, if we, you know, you're gonna run into, so when we did it in Hillcrest, I, I evaluated, um, state equalized value against frontage on the road, against, um, just parcels. And what was happening was Hillcrest had a, a great disparity in values of houses. So there were houses that their, their assessments were coming in at fifty, sixty thousand dollars versus, you know, two or three thousand for some of the lower-cost homes. So in the Howell, Linwood, Maury, and I'm gonna make, and Kim might be able to help me, but I'm assuming the houses on Howell will probably have a higher value than some houses on Maury and Linwood. So you would see a, a great disparity there between what, what, what the average would be. And then when it comes to frontages, in that area, you probably have pretty similar frontages except for the hospital. But on, when we were doing it on, in Hillcrest, there were some properties that had ten feet of frontage and some properties that had four hundred feet of frontage. So there were some very lo- and, and that's how we ended up going with the five thousand dollars, because there were a lot of huge differences in that cost. And part of special assessment districts, and the attorney could help me, but I believe some of the wording is, is that you have to be able to, so what they're paying in assessment, you have to be able to have some sort of, what's the word, increase?
Increase in, in value to the, to the property.
As a result of the special assessment, so when you start talking about five thousand dollars, and you start talking about curb appeal, lack of maintenance on your vehicles, because the roads sound better, and those kind of things, you can get to five thousand dollars, where you can't necessarily get to forty, fifty thousand dollars and say, you're receiving that kind of value offset on your special assessment district. Am I correct or incorrect?
Any more discussion on this item? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Morsi, may I please have a roll call, both city clerk?
Councilman Morsi?
Yes.
Stuchel?
Yes.
Pratt?
No.
Seizer?
Yes.
Mayor Saper?
No.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Brighter?
No.
And Beer?
Yes.
That's five yeses and was it three noes? So you pass?
That would be three noes, yes.
All right, so it's resolution three four nine zero.
Thank you, Katie. Okay. Thank you, folks, for coming out tonight, appreciate it. We'll move on, we got no, uh, old business, no new business.
Adam, I have a question, did it pass or not?
It passed.
Okay, I, I'll send you my five hundred tomorrow.
You don't have to send it to me, thanks.
Anyways, I want the roads fixed, that's all I care about.
Got one reappointment, Chris Bayhusch, the tip bar, any discussion on this?
I ran into him at a rest area, just my chance driving to Detroit, um, and, uh, I asked him, I said, hey, he's, he's, well, certainly, he said, yes.
He's got this great idea, he thinks all of Howell Street should have to be.
Oh.
I don't like it, I think it's good.
All the way down?
Yep, just above.
Harp still. Just the, well, obviously not the upper.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
I, I would.
What you put around for president's office?
There are no ground floor residences, that's why you're talking about.
Oh, I see, the one thing that the general.
We do have.
Okay, I understand. Well, right.
Never know.
I, retail base.
All right, guys, this meeting's not over. Alright guys, this meeting's not over. Anyways, do I have enough motion or a reappoint, Chris, someone wants to continue serving? Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Stutel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on, general public comment, during this time, the podium will be open, please let me get comments in three minutes, please let me get shifts to one to the podium, but at this time, you can speak on whatever you like, Jan.
I kind of think, and this is just my opinion, that I'm one of the top five, maybe, donors, private donors, to the Tiffadon Theater, which makes me proud. I'm glad the artworks, with the help of their friends of the Dawn Theater, put on a hell of a show. It was really nice, was great, I think everybody enjoyed it that was there, refreshments were good. I think that was great. I'd like to, um, commend them for the work they did. I had a little problem, my family was going to go. We sent our check in with my daughter's name on it, cause her and the four kids and I were going to go. But, we sent it in on the twenty-sixth, dropped it in the box at the post office, so it didn't have to go to Detroit or anything. On the last day to buy tickets, the ninth, I got my letter back. There was no name, which I didn't know, nothing I saw said you had to put a name out there, and they did have the names, they had my daughter's name. But I was one of the unlucky ones that didn't get a ticket. They didn't want my money, which I could not believe. And then I had trouble getting my money back from the bank because I had sent a cashier's check and they wrote void on it. So, um, I don't think it was right at all. I don't think a private group of people should be controlling the Dawn Theater, and that's what's happening with the Friends of the Dawn. And I don't think it's right at all. I mean, I was told, well, we need to know who's coming, but yet I know people, people here, actually their ticket had their name on both tickets. But I was also told the tickets weren't transferable, which I guess I'm not sure how his wife or his friend used his other ticket when his name was on both of them. Didn't make any sense to me. Either somebody's not telling the truth or something, I'm not sure. I did speak at the planning commission meeting about the numbers on the front of the building. Cause they're talking about zoning and everything. If zoning's going to be enforced, then the city should be the first one to, to meet the standard. Alan Beaker told me that he personally ordered those numbers in Gelsers and that they are six inches tall. Well, they're not, they're only four, they do not meet the zoning. And how did the fire department give them a, um, occupancy permit? When they don't meet the zoning or whoever does the inspections? I don't understand that, because that definitely does not meet the zoning. Commercial business is six inches tall. That's what the zoning says. But I do think they did a great job. I just hope they do my movie like I asked. I will not be donating any more money after they refused my money, and I'm not sure why they did that. I guess they just had too much money or, or I guess, I think this is a, well, it's a compliment to me because I'm down here and I didn't fit into the social group, which I know we have no social discrimination in this town, I understand that, I've been told that before. You're losing a hell of a councilman right here with Ray Reiner. I hate to see him go. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Any more public comment?
Just need to clarify a statement Jack made, uh, very simply, the fire department does not issue use occupancy permits.
Yes, we know, thank you. Any more public comment?
Dennis Wayne Scott, thirty-four Garden Street. I know you got a letter from Comcast, and I don't know if any of you got your bills or not yet. Mine went up sixty bucks, that's including tax and whatever. Do you realize, uh, I did a couple of figures here, I don't know how many households we have here in Hillsdale. But, you know, yeah, I figured five thousand, okay, that of Comcast. You know, over a, a year, that's three million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars raised that they got. By raising, if they raise everybody's, uh, at fifty-two dollars, I think it is, uh, I figured it up, fifty-two dollars a month. Now, why can't, why can't we come up with something here that open up our own Comcast or our own cable? This is money that, uh, we have or could be being used for the city's use, that could in turn be used for maybe parts of it, be used for the roads. And it wouldn't have to fall back on to the backs of the, uh, public. But, you know, we're being robbed by Comcast by letting them be our general, uh, cable company here. A lot of us older people, we, you know, we enjoy watching TV since we can't work. And, but with, you know, what's the difference between somebody coming up and sticking a gun in my back and, and demanding all my money? Or somebody like Comcast comes in and says, well, if you want this entertainment, you're going to pay for it. When our city at one time was going to start up their own cable and turned around and because of the time it came in, something was, else was going on. And the people didn't get out to vote like they were supposed to. You know, that, that just don't make sense. It, it's, you're, you're after money, you want money, uh, to grow and use for the city. Then why don't we look into getting our own Comcast or our own, uh, cable vision in here? Let the millions of dollars come back to us, the people of, of Hillsdale. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
I want to thank everybody that voted no on this last special assessment, given everybody that came here, council chambers was full and they were all against it. So if I'd been sitting there, I would have voted no also. So thank you for those of you that voted no.
Thanks, Patty. Any more public comment? Seeing none of a closed podium and moving to the city manager's board, you got anything interesting?
David, I'm just a couple of things to mention, um, as Jack did, uh, the Dawn Theater, uh, event on Saturday, very well attended, um, and they did a very nice job. That was the first time I was actually in the building, I stayed out purposely so I could see it done. So I, I was very impressed by the stenciling and the lighting and the whole, the whole thing. I think it was a very tremendous event, I'm looking forward to them doing the one in March, uh, for the general public as well. So that they can show it off, because it's, it's just a tremendous project for the community to move forward with. So I, I can envision weddings and graduations and dances. It's going to be great. This last week, um, most of you probably know that, you know, when we had that rain event, there was flooding that occurred, in the Wildwood subdivision, which was out, is outside the city. But some of that water transverses the airport. And so, um, there, there are some, I would say accusations that, that the airport flooded some homes. So, you know, that is something that, um, will be turned over to our insurance carrier that ensures the airport. So they will address, um, those folks who make claims. But it, it is a bigger issue than just the airport. So just wanted to make sure that any of you had heard about it. You know, that we're on top of it. And I would say that our city staff, our fire department, our police department, our VPU, um, our DPS and engineer, well, they were all out there assisting them the best they could. But protocol is, is that it has to go, it, it goes through the county departments before it gets to us. And we, we basically helped because we felt it was the right thing to do, to assist a neighbor, our neighbors. So, so that being said, um, to answer Dennis's question, you know, that was looked at, um, years ago before I got here. Unfortunately, it's a very costly endeavor to start up, uh, you know, an internet or a, a television, um, fiber or cable system. I think Marshall did it here a few years back and it was in the four million dollar range. So, um, Coldwater has done it, but they did theirs, they had cable in place before they transitioned to fiber. But it is very costly, it is something we've talked about and are looking at. But given, uh, you know, our focus on roads and those things and the cost of it, we just haven't, you know, we got to focus on our highest priorities. We continue to talk about it with the county, Dave Holcomb and, and others, but, uh, it, the mountain is pretty high to climb to. But I will say, ACD has been improving their backbone in the community, and I know there are more options in some areas. So, um, I don't think they're in your area, Dennis, but, um, you might want to check with them because the more interest they get, the more they potential are to expand. So, that being said, that's all I have, if there are questions, I'll be getting the answers.
Any questions, Chris?
Questions, Dave? Uh, yeah, I was out, I went out to Lindwood on Saturday, and, uh, Chris was out there, uh, Dave Morsy, a lot of people were helping, you know, right, doing some messes. I guess the question may be going back to Mr. Engels' point in county and the city cooperative, is there something that maybe we look to see if we can divert water? I mean, so, you know, that's a once in a forty year issue, but is there something that we can take a look at as far as how that really did drain? Is, if it's from the airport side, a burn or something that's, you know, inexpensive or? I, I don't know, I'm just asking between the city and the county, is there something we can look at to see what happened, the root cause of it and try to prevent it again? Is that possible?
Yes. And we've done some of that, um, as the drain commissioner indicated, they don't have any drains up there.
Yeah, right, right.
And actually in that particular area that flooded, and there's no drains there, unfortunately.
I followed it back, yeah.
Yeah. But, and the city engineer and I spent a fair amount of time on that today, tracing, they, uh, satellite images and the water flow. And quite simply, the way the water went is the way it was designed to go, it was just so much of it. Because some folks have thought that that, that kind of little ravine, uh, that's up or to the south there, the ponds there, those, the other ponds on the east side, um, would carry water, but that's the old railroad bed. And that was never designed to carry water. In fact, the water from the airport never, never was meant to cross in that direction. Because I, I had fielded some calls today about, can we connect enough to that? And the, the distance is substantial and it's across private property. But we're, we are looking at options. And I know Doug probably is probably familiar with some of this.
So tomorrow, the drain commissioner is doing his presentation, um, to the board of commissioners, and that's something that we will talk about. Matt Ward is drain commissioner, and he's also spoken about, um, different areas in the county. In particular Circle Drive, which is more south county, um, the, the road itself is under the level of the lake. And so there are a variety of areas in the county, and certainly Wildwood Drive is a new area that we haven't seen in the past. But I'm sure that we'll be talking about that tomorrow, if you'd like to attend, we start at nine, nine o'clock. At the county office building.
Thanks, Doug, thanks, Dave. Any more questions for Dave, not council comment, just questions for Dave. Councilman Soha?
I just wanted to say I appreciate the city, um, going and helping out. And, uh, you know, when, when it snows heavy and I'm clearing my sidewalk, I clear my neighbor's sidewalks up to their driveways.
Absolutely.
If they haven't done it already. Why? Cause I'm their neighbor and it needs to be done. Plus, I don't want the people that are walking by to have to trudge through five inches of snow. I just do it, I don't ask, I've never asked permission, I just do it. And so I just appreciate that kind of cooperation.
And if I may add, Jonesville, um, they brought a fire truck, they tried to bring a pump to help as well. You know, unfortunately, by the time we got through all the protocols, it was in, in the afternoon, which I think the crest was probably, it was on the downhill side. But, um, Jonesville assisted our fire department, they brought equipment, you know, all of our staff, even though it was just out, it was outside of the city, we were there to help.
Can I speak on that?
No.
Nope.
We're.
I want to speak for the fire department, that's what I want to say.
Oh, are you on the fire department?
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah. Yeah, Hillsdale Township Fire Department, cause that's our area, yeah.
You're on the rural department, fire department?
I'm on the Hillsdale Township Fire Department.
Oh, okay, did you have something to add to it?
Yeah, we got called too, um, but what we were afraid of was the liability. So, because we didn't want to pump water out of the basement into the neighbor's basement and then have the neighbor come to us and say, hey. So that was why the Hillsdale Rural or Hillsdale Township did not go out there strictly liability. We didn't want to get involved in a lawsuit with a half a dozen houses out there that we flooded their basements.
Okay.
So otherwise, we would have been there.
Very good, thank you, Jack. Any more questions for Dave? Councilman Beer?
But Wildwood, what, is it Wildwood Drive back in there? It's borders of.
Rear rim.
Yeah.
The water just didn't get to, to the rear rim pond.
Oh, my God, this one has to go.
In the middle, it's got to go somewhere.
Any more comment for Dave or questions? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's board, move to council comment, any council comment?
How long ago did they try to put a city tax?
Would have been two thousand and eleven or twelve.
What do you think was trying to do here?
The city income tax?
It was done since I've been here and I went here in thirteen.
You think so?
I remember it.
Well, I got a council in two thousand and thirteen, and it was on the council before me.
Oh, well, well, maybe I just heard about it.
Cause Doug Root was mayor.
It was talked about. Cause JJ can.
Yeah, I like. Yeah, um, two thousand, I'm not sure exactly. It's been ten years. Was it two thousand and twelve?
I think so.
Two thousand and twelve.
It was talked about on the fair committee.
I think Councilman Beer was on council at the time, weren't you? Any more council comment?
Just echo the great success of the Dawn Theater, a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of people think, you know, it's Chris and Dick and Adam, a lot of people, a lot of noise, a lot of issues, but got there.
The building looks very nice.
It does, gorgeous, it's pretty elegant. The next thing, the little sort of.
Any more council comment? Yeah, I would echo what Councilman Stutel said, Dawn Theater's a very lovely looking building, looks nice. I, uh, I li- I especially like the, how the upstairs still has the old theater, theater seats.
I'm unsure.
Oh, sure. Sure. It's, uh, it was always such a dark place, it was very odd to be in it and have it so bright and positive, because there's always, even when it's a theater or when it's a bar, it's always dark. Very dark and eerie. I did go into the men's room, yeah. If there, so how many toilets are there in the women's?
I, I don't know.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't know, you know, not, obviously not when it's in operation, but.
I don't know.
They helped volunteer over there putting together.
The seats are really cool, the old seats up in the balcony are.
Yeah, they have the old.
But they have to be the old ones.
Yeah, so.
Those aren't sold out?
Yeah.
Was that before the rock?
Any more council comment, or you guys wanna get the hell out of here?
Motion to adjourn.
Six.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Broner to adjourn, seconded by Councilman Soha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting's adjourned.